Welcome. It is November 13th, 2023. Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to ask you to join us in a moment of silent reflection in the memory of Terrence Schurz, Assistant Superintendent for Business from September 2003 through September 2006, and Harry Jefferson, an outstanding football, track athlete, teacher, coach, and senior administrator at White Plains High School across 45 years. Mr. Jefferson was an All-American in football in high school, a New York State record setter in track, an All-American Honorable Mention football player at the University of Illinois. He played professional football for a brief period with the New York Giants before being injured and pursuing a career in education. He was inducted into the Westchester County Sports Hall of Fame, the White Plains High School Hall of Fame, and the White Plains High School Athletics Hall of Fame, and several other halls, along with receiving many awards and honors. Harry Jefferson was a well-known leader and sportsman throughout the local and regional area and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ricka. And before we go on, I just also wanted to add to what you said about Harry Jefferson. You know, we've also named our gym, our high school gym, after Harry Jefferson. He had a big infectious smile and a big personality. He knew and influenced the lives of so many students. He had a great sense of humor. We did attend the same church, and he would come in and he would look at me and he said, "I haven't seen you in about three years." Or he would say, "Are you on the Board of Education?" He'd be like, "Oh, glory. Are your kids in that school too? And you want..." Oh, you know, he was such... He had a big presence. And as you said, Joe, he's a pillar, and he has been a pillar of this community, and he will be sorely, sorely missed. Yes.
I just... In 1972 or 1973, which was before I was born, that's not true, when I was in high school at Woodlands, there was a guy named Harry Jefferson who was a coach and an administrator. And I got to know Mr. Jefferson very well. And then in 1974, when I was 15 and I met a 14-year-old girl from White Plains who knew that her mother was best friends with Harry Jefferson. I went to a Christmas party there, and there was Mr. Jefferson. So I knew Mr. Jefferson my whole life, literally. And a powerful, wonderful, charming, funny advocate for kids. And I learned so much from Harry, and my heart goes out to him and his wife and their whole family. And he was a pillar of the community. He was one of those cornerstones, and I'll miss Harry.
Yeah, the shoulders we stand on. Yeah. So... Next, we'll move to announcements by the Board. Did you want to start?
Yeah, I think, was it last week? We attended... Joe and Cheryl and I went up to Brewster to Tilly Farm to attend Westchester Putnam School Board Association Regional Dinner. And we heard from the Performance Standards Consortium, which is a group of schools that were identified, I think 38 in New York State, to sort of test performance-based measures for students and different types of graduation performance tasks for their students as well. It was a great dinner. We learned a lot. And then on the heels of the New York State Blue Ribbon Commission's announcement today about the changes to the regions. So it was a good timing, and I think we have a lot to talk about in terms of, you know, what graduation is going to look like in 10 years for a lot of our students that are in our schools right now.
Yeah. Sure.
We did reading night. Did we do that last week?
Yes, we did. We did.
Did we talk about that already?
No. Church, no.
No, we did. We did reading night. And it's just wonderful to see the turnout, to see all the students, and they get so excited, and just to listen to their stories. It's wonderful. I sit on the floor, and they ask me about my hair and about my scars. It's great. It's great.
Yeah. Yeah, we did have a good time reading at George Washington. Also, we attended the Veterans Day celebrations. I was at Ridgeway along with Dr. Ricka, Michelle Melendez, Dr. Anne Vicario Teich for a wonderful presentation. And just a few weeks earlier, we did a visit at Ridgeway just to say hello and just really thank and just begin, you know, the season of gratitude, or really a season that we should always encompass and just, you know, show gratitude when we're in the buildings for all that our colleagues do. It's not an easy job, and it's gotten harder since, you know, COVID. But, you know, just going in and saying hello really means a lot to colleagues. And, you know, that's what we try to do. So we were able to just, you know, be in Ridgeway. We also did the White Plains High School trunk or treat. That is a fun, fun thing, fun community event. We thought that Kane was there, but no, he wasn't there. We couldn't, you know, because we saw the dinosaur costume, and we just knew that was Kane, but it was not Kane. I had the opportunity to attend the White Plains Youth Bureau Gala, which was a wonderful event to raise money, but to also honor members of our community, the mayor and Frank. It was just a really nice night. I also attended the NISBA Annual Meeting.
How was that?
It was...
Don't get us started.
I can always rely on Kane.
Say more.
It was, you know, just really providing input on our resolutions, and it's a very long night. And, you know, it was a long night, but I did participate on behalf of the Board to give us... to lend our voice and to be present on issues that impact our students. Yep.
All right. I have several things. So I attended the New York State School Boards Association Convention in Buffalo. I've shared a number of slides with the Board from various presentations. I went to the pre-convention law conference, a session on mock negotiations, a session on grading, DEI, electric school buses, and closing the achievement gap, all pretty hot topics. Kane mentioned the Westchester Putnam Regional Dinner. We also had Westchester Putnam School Boards Association Round Tables that we hosted here in White Plains that several of us attended. It was an opportunity to network with different members of school boards in the region and talk about different areas, such as, you know, curriculum or special education. And, you know, so that was really good. What else? Special education coffee talk. Parents really appreciate that opportunity to be here, to be heard, and it was in person, which was really terrific. I went to the PTA Council meeting. Lydia Chris from the Friends presented, and Amy Geiger talked about volunteering opportunities at both the middle school and the high school. I attended the White Plains High School Play. They did a murder mystery comedy called Deadline, which was really fun. And then some NISBA things, the business meeting. Keenan Bean actually is doing some presentations, one of our law firms. And so they did a presentation on special education law. And NISBA, New York State School Boards Association, did a webinar on communications that I went to. And I also wanted to mention BOSI's. BOSI's has been doing, partnering with the New York State Education Department to feature some different school districts called Elevating Student Voices and talking about student involvement and student empowerment in different school districts. So I'll be able to bring back some information about those. Southern Westchester BOSI's, I'm a member of the Board. The president and some of the administrators will actually be here now. It's in March, I guess, right? It had to change. And they're going to come talk to us about the different opportunities that Southern Westchester BOSI's provides to our school district and all the member school districts, including career tech, which we take advantage of, special ed programs, professional development, adult education, the RIC, BOSI's aid. So there are so many different benefits that we get from BOSI's. And I was really excited to see that actually our students have the opportunity to take a trip to the BOSI's Career Day on November 17th. So we're actually taking a busload or more of kids. They can go to the Southern Westchester BOSI's campus and actually learn about the different programs that are being offered there. So that's really terrific. I also attended... The New York State Education Department has been holding regional meetings on mixed-gender competition around New York State, and Southern Westchester BOSI's was hosting one of those sessions. So I actually attended, and they were really working on updates to their policy guidelines and gathering input from various stakeholders. So that was really interesting as well. And I also attended... BOSI's hosted a substantial equivalency forum with David Frank, who am the New York State Education Department. Joe and I have already talked about that. And the idea here is that this has been on the books for this law for a really long time in New York State, but that we are required as a school district to really have some oversight of private schools and the curriculum that they are offering to basically verify that they are offering a substantially equivalent curriculum. So it's a rather complicated, I think, process, but we have it well in hand.
We do.
Sorry, the public... My understanding. So the public schools monitor the private schools' implementation of their curriculum?
Cool.
So under the... Do you want me?
Yeah, go.
So under the substantial equivalency regulation, the school district, the public school district in the geographic area has to check in with each private, parochial, independent school in their area. And those schools are charged with identifying a particular pathway that they have selected to achieve so-called substantial equivalency.
Or to confirm, right?
Confirm it, yeah. However they are working toward that, completing that process. Then that... So we act as sort of a conduit. Then that information comes through the local public school district up to the State Education Department, where the State Education Department determines whether or not there are any additional needs or questions related to the report submitted by the private, parochial, independent school. So the process, where we are in the process right now is we have reached out to the schools in our geograph... in our area, in our school district via letter, certified, emailed, asking them to identify the pathway that they've selected. And thank you to the private, parochial, and independent schools. They have been responding to us, getting us that information, which we will then... It's now been extended to January, which we will do the second phase of the data upload. And then eventually, not this year, but next academic year, the local Boards of Education will certify the information that's been provided to us that goes to State Ed. So there's still, you know, a lot of conversation about ways that the process in and of itself might be improved upon, but since...
Did they address the fact that our employees, who are busy doing their jobs for our public school, are now split to do monitoring of our private schools?
Yeah. That's been brought up.
Was it brought up?
Yes. And a lot of it, though, some of those pathways, or six of those seven pathways, don't require active intervention, essentially. So if, you know, the schools offer Regents exams, or if the schools are accredited by certain organizations, then in fact, they automatically provide substantial equivalency. And it's only if those six pathways can't be met where we have to, you know, actually do something a little more active, I would say.
Especially since we... I mean, we're a large district with multiple private and parochial schools.
Right.
Yeah. And, you know, we have, you know, a handful, more than a handful, but some school districts, depending upon where you are in the region, could have over 100.
Right.
So the process, you know, is very fluid. And I have to say, you know, big thanks to our local elected officials, as well as the Commissioner and the State Education Department, who have been really, really receptive to our thoughts about ways that we could improve the process, particularly the timelines. So this is now the second time that the initial upload dates were pushed back based on what we're hearing from the school districts and, you know, the feasibility of doing it.
And the other interesting thing is that once these things are certified, we don't have to do it again for seven years. So, yeah.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Jim and I, we were at the Hall of Fame, right?
I didn't make it.
Oh, I thought you would make it.
He announced you.
We announced you. I was looking. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I did get to go to the Hall of Fame, which is just always awesome. You know, just seeing everybody come back and, you know, athletics and life intersect. And I think that being an athlete prepares you to be a better student as well and to be a better professional ultimately, and to see people who... There was one person that influenced one of my sons in terms of swimming, you know, even though he was a senior and my son was a lowly freshman, I think at the time, or sophomore. He really took an interest and took him under his wing, and that's the essence of what sports, at least sports here, does. And that same person wrote a letter to my younger son in college when he was swimming. I don't even know if you really met Zach, but he did that because his mother asked him to participate in that program where swimmers from high school, you know, your high school would reach out to you in college or however it was. So the influences are great. The turnout from the community is absolutely awesome to honor these athletes. So I always enjoy that night.
Just that one more thing to say. It has really nothing to do with school. There's about four hours left in today, and today is World Kindness Day. And it doesn't feel that the world is particularly kind right now, and I think a lot about our children and about what we are modeling for our children as parents, as members of the community, as members of our culture, our society. And maybe we could just be a little bit more kind. Just dip your toe in the water. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. And we're all good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. So next, we'll move to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we could actually definitely connect that to school, Charlie, and I think every day that we could be working to be as kind as we possibly can to each other. That's a great idea. I do want to welcome a number of our school community members. Church Street is in the house this evening. Thank you. And of course, we have our representative from Ridgeway as well. Thank you. I know you're here in multiple roles. Mr. Eaton from Highlands as well. Thank you, sir, for being here. And I do want to, before I give my brief update and then yield the remainder of my time to Dr. Han and Dr. Bart Poles, I do want to welcome free... Do you want to come on up and give us our... I always wait for this monthly update. It's fantastic. And I want to thank you for taking time out of your schedule, which I know you're busy, for being here.
And this is an example of our elevating student voices.
Absolutely.
Hi, everybody. I hope you're having a good November and a happy beginning to holidays. Today, I'm going to be starting with Ridgeway. Ridgeway told me that it had its Walk/Bike to School Day with over 100 families participating. There's also a PTA-sponsored assembly from Two by Two Animal Haven to present different animal kingdoms. And to top it off, in honor of ADHD Awareness Month, students learned about neurodiversity and created Butterfly Collage as a demonstration of each person's beautiful uniqueness. At Eastview, the Community Service Club planted flower bulbs in partnership with the City of White Plains, and during the Veterans Day celebration, the band and orchestra were able to perform. In Post Road, to end Hispanic Heritage Month, several students from the dual-language program led an assembly that highlighted the various contributions of the Hispanic community, as well as different aspects of the culture. The kids at Post Road also partook in different Halloween festivities like trunk-or-treat games and haunted house. There was also practice for girls on the run. The girls will complete their first 5K next Sunday. Last but not least, winter track has begun at White Plains High School. Tryouts were this afternoon. Other than that, there's not much report on the athletic front.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, as always. And I do want to just, once again, thank everybody for all the support that we received for, in honor of our veterans, both those who have served and are presently within the White Plains City School District and the greater community and beyond. In addition to the events that took place at elementary schools like Ridgeway, we once again had a really beautiful, beautiful program at Eastview in the morning as well. So thank you again to everybody who participated and made those wonderful days for our veterans. Also, want to wish all who are celebrating a very happy and joyous Diwali. It is also American Education Week, and we have events and activities taking place all throughout the school district. And I would love to thank our PTA for always supporting these efforts and really being there in so many ways to help elevate and celebrate our students, especially during events like American Education Week. The New York State Education Department heard from the so-called Blue Ribbon Panel today related to recommendations for additional pathways for graduation. There is going to be much more on this topic, but for those who maybe have students who are in elementary or middle school, there is a likelihood that the pathways or the number of pathways may be changing in the coming years related to graduation. Now, this is not to say that the rigor for graduation is going to be diminished, rather, it's going to provide additional, multiple ways for students to be able to demonstrate their growth academically and be able to show that they're prepared to take the next steps outside of high school. I give a lot of credit to the Board of Regents, to the Commissioner, and as well as the panel for really exploring new and novel ways to assess student growth and outcomes and readiness for truly the 21st century. So a bit more to come on that. Also, want to just give you a quick update on electric vehicles and stop-arm cameras. You know that we are in the process of working with both the City of White Plains, as well as National Express, to install stop-arm cameras on our school buses. And those are those cameras that would take a picture if somebody were to make a bad decision of going around a stopped school bus with the stop sign extended, of course creating a very dangerous situation for students who would be entering or exiting the bus. So we're looking forward to having that process completed.
There was an article in the Journal News this morning about...
Related to Yonkers.
Yes, yes.
So Yonkers, their program is up and running, and hopefully, you know, in the coming new year, will be up and running as well. With regard to electric vehicles, of course, there's a timeline that's been put out for all school buses to become EVs, electric vehicles, by 2035, I believe is the target date. Some may say that's an aspirational date, because if you speak to the utility companies, there is a lot of work to do to set up for a full transition of diesel buses to electric buses. So there is going to be a lot of conversation there, but what's important to share, I think, is number one, the White Plains City School District has been in these conversations since, well, for a while. We were the first to be running electric vehicles. You know, we have five that run through the National Express fleet. It's not expanded as yet, and of course, for a variety of reasons, one of which stems from supply chain issues that were exacerbated by the pandemic. And the other is related to the ability to charge based on what the infrastructure presently allows.
And even, you know, the weight of these school buses apparently is greater, and there are roads and culverts, especially in rural areas, that cannot support these buses at this point.
So there's a lot of logistics that still needs to be hammered out. Doesn't mean, you know, that aspirational plans to reduce carbon emissions aren't great things, but I think, you know, as we move forward, progress probably will dictate that there'll be, need to be some adjustments to the timeline. 2035, while it might seem like it's a while off, it's really not, if you're talking about shifting an entire culture and also business.
And 2027 is all school bus purchases.
New bus purchases.
New buses need to be electric vehicles.
Right.
It was a big topic. It was a major theme at the Buffalo Convention, and there's a lot of concern that's out there and being expressed.
Yeah, thank you. And so we'll be sure to share more as things come up. Again, White Plains Athletics Hall of Fame is taking place right now. Very exciting and excited to celebrate all of the new honorees, and especially excited to celebrate Chuck Stovall, who for many, many years has, I mean, more years, right, than has been a, just a pillar of the athletic community and the voice, of course, of our athletic events on Loxfield. Division One College Signing also took place today. We have two Tigers who are going to be headed off to Division One schools, Boston College and Vanderbilt, for volleyball and tennis, respectively, full rides. So, yeah, signed today. We also have students who are headed off to the States on Thursday for swim. Kara, Nicole, Grace, and Saskia are going to be representing White Plains High School in the 200 free. Saskia will be competing in the 50 and 100 free individual events. And there will be a send-off at the high school as well, so the kids make the long ride upstate. Right, right. We also just want to share, we had 12 of our students submit applications for the Regeneron Science Talent Search through our White Plains High School Science Research Program as well. So congratulations to those students for putting themselves out there and completing the application, which are big, big applications, big process. And of course, thanks to our faculty members, who are all shepherding that process along. The Friends of White Plains has announced a Thanksgiving Eve reunion, and it's going to be a blast. Information is out. It's going to be taking place at a very well-known establishment in town, and all the information can be found on the White Plains, or the Friends of White Plains Public Schools website, as well as Twitter and everywhere else. I do want to give you a real quick update. Just before I came downstairs, addressed through Facebook Live as a follow-up to a Friday Facebook Live related to a planned, not school-sponsored, but a planned student demonstration that was posted on social media. The post on social media for the demonstration, which was a demonstration in support of Palestine, and of course, on that social media post, it's very limited, but that was the gist of the post, created a great deal and continues to create a great deal of concern, fear, and anxiety throughout the White Plains City School District. Heard from more parents and guardians and students and community members than I could even tell you between Thursday night and right now. And of course, we're appreciative for all those folks reaching out to us. Did have the opportunity today to sit down with the student organizer or the student who posted that announcement, as well as the parent and guardians of the student, along with the high school principal, and had a very lengthy conversation. And in short, the result of the conversation, to the credit of student and parents and guardians, was to change the tact by which the student seeks to raise their voice. In White Plains City School District, we think that students engaging and elevating their voices and engaging in community efforts and community conversations is very, very important. But we also recognize that safety, security are our primary. Our primary goal is to make sure all of our students are safe and all of our community members are safe. And I will tell you that when it came to the attention of this particular student, that fear, anxiety, and concern were being sowed by the idea that was put forward, minds were changed. And I have to tell you, I really respect that, and I'm appreciative and grateful for the parents and guardians who engage in the conversation with us, as well as our student who is now seeking to consider alternative ways to have a conversation while bringing people together. Now, folks may initially ask, "How are they going to do that?" Well, we haven't gotten to that yet. And that is a process that's going to take place at the school. It'll take place with our students, as well as with support from faculty, staff, administration, whatever we need to do. But ultimately, the message that I wanted to share this evening, in addition to what we put out... we put out just a couple minutes ago on Facebook, and there'll be more information coming out of White Plains High School as an update, is that there's going to be a different direction or there has been a shift than what was initially stated. As always, we'll make sure that we continue to be as transparent and communicative as we possibly can related to anything taking place or even potentially taking place in our schools. And again, you know, just a big thanks to parents, guardians, community members, everyone who reaches out to us and always, and always make sure that we know what they know so that we can support our children in the best way possible. We work very, very hard to create a fabric of community in White Plains that I believe is second to none, and we want to make sure that even inadvertently, that fabric, nobody pulls at it. It can stretch, it can change, we can, you know, have conversations, but we want to make sure is that in all those conversations, we continue to stay unified as a community and make sure that we're respecting and supporting all members. So, wanted to give you that quick update before I say Happy Thanksgiving and remind you to participate in the PTA Craft Fair, it's going to be coming up at the beginning of December.
Yeah.
And then turn over the rest of the superintendent's report to Dr. Hand and Dr. Porpolis, unless there's any questions from any trustees. Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Hand.
Thank you, thank you. So, I just want to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Ricker for giving us this opportunity to share our New York State data this evening on the math, the ELA, and the Regents exams for 2023. So, we just recently, within the last few weeks, received this data back, which was a little bit later than we normally get the data back. We normally receive it back in August. We did receive preliminary results that we can use, you know, to make decisions at the district level prior to that, and we still don't have comparative data to New York State. So, I want to say that before we start to go through our data. And what you're going to notice as we go through ELA and mathematics is that you're going to see gains in certain areas and slight dips, but overall, our ELA scores have remained steady, which means that we want to see more growth in our student outcomes, and you're going to see some solid growth in mathematics. And then when we get to the Regents, I'll talk more. So, I'm going to go through the data slides, and Dr. Porpolis will be talking about the action plans that we have in response to the data that we have in front of us. So, for the New York State ELA in grades three through five, you'll notice as we move through grade three, four, and five, that we see, you know, a slight dip in third grade, but we see gains, slight gain in fourth grade, and a little bit more of a gain in fifth grade. We also, in addition to New York State data, we measure our growth and progress using M-class, which is DIBELS, and we are seeing growth in K1 and 2, and we carefully monitor, you know, our growth and achievement with that as well, as long with, along with the New York State results and along with the work that we do on a daily basis with our children in the classrooms. And then when we move up to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we see a dip in sixth grade, and I just want to point out, I haven't seen, as I said, the New York State comparative data yet, but we did see a rise in that sixth grade last year that we need to look at trend data. You know, it was a larger gain than we expected to gain. We were happy to see it, but I'm cautious of looking at that 42 until I see more data so that I can make sure of where we are with that. But we've been using reports, like benchmark reports, to make sure that our curriculum is in alignment and our instruction is in alignment so that we are making sure that we are meeting all those standards. And then in grade seven, you see that slight gain to 45 from 43, and then in grade eight, a larger gain to 54 from 46. Now, saying that, I put this as comparative data from 2022 to 2023, but every year, this test changes slightly, and the state reminds us not to compare from one year to the next. But it's hard then to get a sense of where you really are, so I put that up there, and I put it up there with a caution that they weren't exactly the same test. But the important work is behind the test scores and what we do for our children every day. And Dr. Porpolis is going to talk a little bit about the responses that we've had in ELA.
So, we work, you'll see some themes throughout these action plans, because we work collaboratively together as coordinators, directors, and also with our building leaders. So, I'm just going to point out a few highlights from the ELA K-5 action plan. So, implementing the new Universal Screener, which is the Northwest Evaluation Association Measure of Academic Progress, that's what NWEA MAP stands for, the Growth Assessment. And so, this provides actionable information about students, including the ability to monitor student growth throughout the year, as well as longitudinally, year to year, which makes it a very powerful assessment tool. We'll continue to align our K-2 program with evidence-based research. This is through the Science of Reading. We've held Science of Reading committees over the past few years that put forth some recommendations, and so this helped to provide this systematic approach with a focus on phonemic awareness, decoding, fluency, vocabulary development, and comprehension. We're also adding and continuing to add decodable texts and helping to build our classroom libraries to include this informational text so that we can make connections with content areas such as science and social studies. We're providing support for teachers with Letters Volume One and Volume Two training, as well as core reading, professional learning opportunities, and coaching. We're also continuing to help build a deep understanding of the grade-level standards in literacy, and there is also intentional use of the assessments that Dr. Hand mentioned, the DIBELS, M-class, Lectura, as well as ERLA, and Aneel to help monitor student progress. As we move into grades six through eight, you're going to see that in addition to implementation of the NWEA MAP assessment, some highlights are providing professional learning to support data analysis and integrate those results into our instructional planning, also using commative, common formative assessments throughout the year, and these results are reviewed in teams, and they're used to help inform instruction, not only for individual students, but also for small groups of students. We also are continuing our collaborative work with coordinators, building leaders, to help plan and implement professional learning for literacy across the disciplines, so across all disciplines, and to leverage opportunities where we can continue to develop literacy throughout the school day. One example is using shared academic vocabulary targets.
So, in mathematics, in grades three, four, and five, we've seen consistent growth as we move through the grade levels. So, as you can see on the slides in front of you, 43% from that 2022 comparison to 49% in grade three, 44 to 52 in grade four, and 43 to 51 in grade five. I've also done analysis on how we did last year in mathematics, as well as how we did pre-pandemic, if you will, from like a 2019 perspective. And last year, in 2022, our overall from three through eight was 36%, and our overall is now 47%. So, we've seen a nice gain as we move through three through eight as well, and pre-pandemic, it was at 43. So, we've actually surpassed that as well in mathematics. So, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, from a 38 in the previous year to 42%, 34 in sixth grade, 34 to 50% in seventh grade, and 14 to 39% in eighth grade. And I do have to mention something about seventh and eighth grade. We have accelerated students and double-accelerated students. When we're looking at New York State test scores for grades seven and eight, those students are not included in the percentages of proficiency because they're taking a different test, which is something that we're going to actually be looking at. So, we have two sections of algebra students at seventh grade, and then at eighth grade, we have two sections of students in geometry, and we have seven sections of students in algebra. So, when we add those numbers together for eighth grade in particular, we have over 200 students that would be taking the math grade eight test, that aren't taking the math grade eight test because they're already accelerated in mathematics. So, I always point out that we need to consider that when looking at the math scores.
Can you explain to me why it's a little bit different idea to have the kids sit for a math state test as opposed to like an ELA state test, right? You had given us a reason in terms of just the approach the students use to the math state exam, if they're sitting in algebra or geometry as opposed to sitting for like an ELA extended exam?
Well, in terms of sitting in front of these exams, you can't study for these exams. So, you know, that goes true of the ELA exam and the mathematics exam. You don't know what the questions are going to look like, you don't know the way in which they're going to be, they're going to be presented. They could have vocabulary and terms in it that throw a child off and really don't have anything to do with the conceptual understanding of mathematics. And sometimes kids think of math a little bit differently, and depending on how, you know, fluid the test is at that time, it's hard for them to grapple with that. I think that we see the same thing with the Regents exams as well, but this year in particular, and I think Kathy's going to talk a little bit about this, we really made sure that we took a look at the test results and looked at the standards and looked at the data analysis of what our kids got, what our students got wrong, and, you know, what maybe have caught them up a little bit, and then looked at our curriculum, looked at our instruction, brought it back to our teachers to make sure, how are we teaching this? How long are we teaching this? Are we giving it a spiraling effect where, you know, you address it in one month and then you bring it back in different ways as you move along? So, I'm not sure if that really answered your question, Kane, but when you asked the question, that's what I was thinking.
More the justification for a parent who has a child in algebra or geometry to sit for the, another test.
Oh, for the eighth grade.
I'm sorry, that's what I was asking.
If you're an accelerated or a double-accelerated math student, and you're taking, and you're sitting in front of a New York State eighth grade or seventh grade math test, it's basically a practice set of mathematical problems for you that when you are accelerated in math, you kind of think is cool to do. So, you know, I don't think that you feel like, oh, my goodness, now I'm taking another assessment. I really think it's more of, oh, now I get to really, you know, show my math work, which would help us with our test scores. So, I think that that is an important area to explore, and I know that Mr. Eaton is here, and I've talked to him, and Al Laporte, the math coordinator, isn't here this evening, but we've had conversations too about really making sure that, you know, you can see it as double testing, but in reality, it's not double testing. It's really making sure that our kids are showing the math progress and performance that they are putting forth, and we're able to do that both on the Regents exams at the middle school level, as well as the seventh and eighth grade exams.
And I'll just add about the benchmark reports. We do meet with principals, we meet with grade levels, departments, we go over the benchmark reports, and they're very helpful because they really do give us information with regards to trends, and we look back at our curriculum as well. So, to point out a few of the highlights of the mathematics for grades K through six and our action plan, we're going to continue emphasis on core instruction and the use of our articulated curriculum maps for grades K through five and six. Also, the implementation of the NWA MAP screener that I mentioned earlier, also integration of the Universal Design for Learning strategies in mathematics instruction. We're going to, we also incorporate those New York State-released items throughout instruction. In the year, we put them into assessments. We also use them as problems of the week and just any unit or quiz assessments so that students are accustomed to seeing the format of those items. We are continuing our math specialist push-in support into classes to provide whole-group lessons, targeted small-group support, as well as extensions of learning, and also providing that mathematics support in either before or after-school programming. I know at Eastview, children can sign up to receive assistance in mathematics after school, and we've expanded that this year. We also have mathematics lab at Eastview in addition to regular mathematics classes, providing parent workshops in mathematics, and also looking at partnerships with our community organizations, all to support that culture of mathematics learning, and continuing to provide professional learning opportunities to support our teachers' professional growth. Some examples of that are NWA MAP. We provided a lot of professional learning to learn about the MAP assessment, which I'll discuss later, read how to read those reports, and also embedded coaching opportunities, Saturday Academy and UDL Professional Learning. In mathematics, seven through 12, in addition to the NWA MAP assessment, some highlights of our action plan include professional learning to support the use of Performance Matters, which is a tool that we use. It's to evaluate performance of students on various assessments that they take to be able to pinpoint areas where they could benefit from either support or extensions of learning. There's also the After School Math Academy program at the middle school, high school, to extend learning time and to allow hours of focused math instruction. The grade-nine algebra teachers will continue with the next phase of the UDL training, and there will be a continued focus on effective lesson planning to support all of our learners. Through the use of department meetings, we'll leverage the power of AI, artificial intelligence, to assist teachers in creating a variety of resources to support students at all levels of proficiency. For example, just you can use AI to look at the creation of word problems, all different word problems, and they can be attached to specific standards, so we're excited about that. And continuing focused attention on strengthening support for our English language learners through evidence-based co-teaching models.
And then moving on to our Regents exams and our Regents results. So, you'll notice as we go through living environment, and again, this is more of a comparable, you know, design because the tests do pretty much stay the same, at least in terms of performance. So, living environment, we had 65% at 65 or above. In the Regents, chemistry, we had 39%. In earth science, 55%. Physics, 58%. Algebra I, 59%. And these are district level, so that it includes both the high school and the middle school. The common core Algebra II, 59. The common core English at 88%. And the common core geometry at 41%. And the new format of the Global History at 79%. The one that isn't listed is the US History Regents. It was, the new design was administered the first time last year, so there was no comparative data from '22 because it was a different exam, and for the first year, we did have an 83% proficiency rating.
And proficiency here means 65 and above.
65 and above in all categories. So, again, you can see that we've kind of like held our own in places. You know, our students in Algebra I at Highlands and Earth Science in Highlands, you know, they went up a little bit in the Algebra I from 98% reaching proficiency to 100% reaching proficiency, and in Earth Science, 41% to 62%. At the high school, there's less children that take Earth Science, the children that do take it, there was 18% reaching proficiency, and then this year, it was 32%. So, again, we do notice that there is work to be done, and we're taking, you know, a deep look into the Regents exams to see how we can make those improvements, not, you know, that are going to benefit our students. So, in terms of science, we have, looking at the Regents results and making sure that we set teachers' goals so that they are actually working towards improving their student outcomes on an individual basis, by classroom by classroom. Item analysis of June Regents exams and making sure that we share the curriculum sequence and pacing and the depth of the courses. The common quarterly exam so that we can compare how students are doing across sections and have teachers work together. and have teachers work together to make sure that they're supporting each other in their delivery of the content. Mirror the style and the content of current Regents exams. You want that rigor, like I say the word rigor and then I think it's a little cliche, but you definitely want that cognitive engagement in the classroom and you want what we're assessing students to be at that level of rigor that they're going to see. And the alignment to the standards is more important to me. And then the item analysis to identify our areas of strengths and weakness. And then the common planning time so that teachers can work together, identifying explicit instruction in process words. Heavy, heavy focus on vocabulary across the grades, a tiered vocabulary approach. So you're looking at tier one, tier two, tier three. Tier three would be your domain vocabulary, so that would be specific to science and science lessons. We have our administrators and our curriculum coordinators doing walkthroughs together. And also professional development on co-teaching strategies. Deb Algarden has done an amazing amount of work in the area of special education and the director of multi-language learners and world languages is really diving deeply into co-teaching strategies for our E and L teachers. And then finally, for social studies, again, a lot of data analysis, looking at these exams, pulling them apart, seeing how, you know, where are students miss questions, how we can support them to, you know, to do better, to have better outcomes. And that's, that's us, right? That's our job of teaching. And discussion and analysis of the US History Regents, bringing that down to the middle school level so that the education is in alignment with that Regents from middle school through high school. And again, the quarterly exams that I talked about before and the other subject areas, department time allocated to data analysis. The math department and the social studies department are working together on the UDL professional development for the teachers in the social studies electives and in algebra for mathematics. Again, the co-teaching strategies for E and L so that you can see that there's consistency across departments, that these are like major, you know, major, major teaching and, and, and curriculum instruction goals that we have for the year. Updated US History and Government Regents review books so that our students have the recent information that they need to review. You can't use a review book that's a couple of years old because the tests have changed. And then after school extended day tutoring for global and for US history. And also a strong commitment to the seal of civic readiness and really, you know, bringing that in through K through 12 and making sure especially as children get to middle school and then into high school, that they have distinct pathways of how to earn the seal of civic readiness on their high school diploma. And the potential goal that we have is that all children will be having that seal on their diploma. That, because it, it is definitely something that everybody can attain. Kathy is going to take a few brief moments to talk a little bit about NWEA just so everybody has a little bit more contextual background of that.
Can I just say something? I mean, in light of the Blue Ribbon Commission presenting its recommendations to the Board of Regents today, and, you know, I don't know how many years it's going to take for all of this to unfold and turn into actual, you know, guidance and regulation. At some point, we may be adding performance, performance-based assessments to our repertoire as well. Not to say that this isn't all very important and Regents will continue to exist, but we will be expanding.
And they've started to like dip their toe into that with the science, right? So we didn't, we didn't have elementary science up here because we didn't administer elementary science last year because grade four didn't have a test last year, but grade five will have a test this. I don't want to start talking about that because I could talk like a whole evening about science. But that science and the eighth grade science test now has investigations and they are performance-based. They're not graded necessarily, they're graded for completion and they're, they're graded for the fact that children had the experience to engage in these investigations, but it was a move forward. It was a step in the right direction.
And our commitment to, you know, civic readiness is also part of those recommendations that came out today.
But sure, whether we go performance-based or it's formative, I mean, it's data, right? So we're going to have data regardless of the assessments we use, right? So I just appreciate, you know, just, it's a hard conversation to have. We want to have these conversations, we want to look at our student data and I think it's important. But I think centering their performance, right? And what we could do to support the teachers in the classrooms to get our students to show growth is really important.
Whatever form it takes.
Right. And I know that in New York State ELA, we could debate the merits of that and the timeliness of the results, but I think what it comes down to though is really the, the fact that we're having these conversations and that we have so many formative and summative and diagnostic assessments that, that our teachers can use to target. And you're going to talk about, I don't want to ruin your.
We, we have, we have local assessments and screeners and universal assessments and formative assessments that show us the growth that students are making. And I say every single year, this is one day snapshot, it's one particular test. Children take it, some do very, very well on it. Some children you expect to do very, very well on it and they don't do as well on it because it's a standardized exam. You know, we've also come through a pandemic. So when you're looking at like our third graders, when you realize their kindergarten experience, their first grade experience, their second grade experience, and yes, you know, we are where we are in third grade and we know what we need to do to move them forward. So I think that's why we really focused this evening on our actions to the data. But we are very, very data-rich. We have a lot of data, we have a lot of ways in which we can, you know, you know, impact our instruction and make sure that we're working with small groups of children, make sure that we're personalizing and individualizing the instruction that we provide to students through, you know, whether it's tier one, tier two or tier three or after school or extended day opportunities for the morning or on Saturdays. So we really are trying to make sure that we provide as much support as we possibly can. So we're going to let Kathy talk a little bit about NWEA and then if you have any other further questions.
So we were very excited to be able to begin implementation of the NWEA assessment. We really started with a lot of professional learning for our leaders, our coordinators, our directors, our other administrators, our school administrators, math specialists, reading specialists, special ed teachers, anyone who supported through use of the assessments. And so after those leadership meetings, we were also able to provide professional development on the superintendent's conference days. And so what that looked like was at first, it was just getting to know the assessment because NWA is an adaptive assessment. And that was something a little bit different for our students as they navigated problems that they may not have seen before. And so it was something where we spoke with our students, they were able to do some practice items. And overall, we received very positive feedback from the teachers, from building leaders about the assessment itself. But just to give you, yes, Dr. Ricka?
I'm so sorry, but for folks who might not know, especially folks who might be watching at home right now, an adaptive assessment is an assessment that.
It is, an adaptive assessment is unique for every student because essentially it adapts, ask students, answer questions. And so if they answer questions and they answer correctly, it will give a student another question that's slightly more challenging. If a student has difficulty, it will then give a student a question that's slightly easier or just more adapted to where they are currently are. They're measured with a RIT score, which essentially is where a student answers 50% of the questions correctly on the assessment. And we're continuing to learn. We just went through a professional development where we learned how to read the reports. And this year, we're really establishing a benchmark. It's our first year, we're looking forward to January, where we're going to be administering in mid-January to mid-February. At that point, we'll be able to determine and begin to determine a growth score as the assessment really gets used to all of the children and gets to know them individually. But really, we chose NWEA, it went through a committee process. It had, it serves about 16 million students.
16.2 million.
Yes, the data that it has, the pool is pretty huge. Also, its standard error of measurement was really the best on the market that we could find. We know that there are a lot of neighboring districts who have had a lot of success using NWA MAP. And we also really liked the way it broke out results for us and started to into the different strands so we can really meet student individual needs. So we're looking forward to learning more about it, but I just wanted to give you a very brief overview of NWEA.
And I just want to give Dr. Barpolis and the other curriculum coordinators, Doug Krunk is here this evening, just how much work it took to really roll this out to a district our size. So in mathematics, we did NWEA assessments from kindergarten all the way through ninth grade algebra. And for ELA, we did from fifth grade to ninth grade because we use the M-class DIBELS, as I mentioned before, in kindergarten through fourth grade. So, yeah, just an amazing, amazing amount of work, making sure that every single classroom, every single student had a device, that they were going to be able to take this test and take it with integrity and give it their all. And they really did. Like I, I went through some of the early administration with Kathy and I visited Ridgeway and I know that, you know, it's a brand-new assessment. So in terms of our teachers becoming familiar with it and our principals becoming familiar with it, I really want to do a shout-out to the principals and to the teachers as well that the, the support behind bringing in something that is this state-of-the-art really in terms of, you know, finding a universal screener was unparalleled. And it really was a great experience. And I was thinking when we were first talking about this at the end of last school year, why don't we just do elementary school? We could just do middle school, we don't have to do it all at the same time. But there were, there was a lot of, there was a lot of passion about the need to do this all at the same time. So I just have to give them kudos for, for all the work they've done. It was longer than five minutes, but it wasn't 46 slides long.
Can I just say, I mean, as you said, we're data-rich and we really appreciate this commitment by the district to really be looking at that data and analyzing it and determining those ways that we can support our students by really examining the data.
What's working for us and what's not. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Han, thank you, Dr. Barpolis. And, and, you know, to the Board of Education, thank you for giving us the opportunity to continue to grow and improve. You know, we're never going to be satisfied, no matter where we are, when we come to you and we're 75 and 82, we're going to say, well, and I, because I know, Dr. Barpolis, Dr. Han, and all of our colleagues in the classrooms, you know, it's always about right, it's always about continuous, continuous improvement. I also want to, to give a, a great deal of, of credit to faculty and staff members, support staff members as well in the classroom who continuously work to improve outcomes with our kids. Those teachers who come every day and seek to grow, help to grow each individual child, I mean, that is, that is an amazing effort. And I want to thank everybody for doing that, our principals for helping to support our colleagues in the classroom. And also our, our students for working hard and, and looking forward to opportunities to grow. And parents and guardians, especially folks who might be watching this evening, you know, every one of us can engage with our child's learning by asking those questions, monitoring their progress. And if we don't understand something that may or may not be taking place in a classroom by reaching out and asking, and I can tell you that the White Plains City School District and all the members in the organization would welcome any questions, comments, concerns from parents and guardians as their children are making their way from our pre-K programs all the way through senior year of high school. I think that's what makes us different, I think that's what makes us special. And for, for parents and guardians who are interested in continuing to take those next steps into being involved in, in their child's academic trajectory and academic growth, we welcome that partnership as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
That concludes my report.
No, that was very informative. We know the importance of data, so thank you, thank you, thank you. So next, we'll continue with our superintendent, with public participation. Will there be any public participation tonight? Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to move into our summary action items. We have summary action items, three through eight. May I have a motion?
So, second.
I am back. The season of gratitude continues. If I would ask you to take a look at item 4B for donations. Tremendous amount of donations this month. Thank you to USA Today Network for donating 25 copies of USA Today to the high school Monday through Friday for the 2324 academic year. A $250 donation for the Philip Barnett Memorial Scholarship Fund from Dr. Hagop El Shahabian. A $500 donation for the Dr. Leonard G. Rhodes Memorial Fund by Ms. Donna Joseph. And the following donations were made by the White Plains Teachers Association from a grant from the American Federation of Teachers for the following, to the following schools. A refrigerator and a freezer to the high school, Highlands Middle School, Ridgway and Eastview Schools. A refrigerator, freezer and shelving to Mamaroneck Avenue School. A freezer to Post Road School. A standard mobile storage cabinet to the Church Street School. Bags, storage boxes and hygiene supplies were distributed to buildings upon request as well. All of those, those donations continue to assist in our food pantries and, and the like as well. The following donations were made from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools. A $3,450 check to fund an $18,000 grant for Beyond Broadway Dancing for fifth graders in all five elementary schools this year. The unspent balance of the 2223 academic year will be reallocated to the, to fund the program. And a $900 check to fund a $2,100 grant for a trip by Rochambeau students to Philadelphia. The unspent balance of the, of $1,200 from 2122 will be reallocated to, to fund this trip. So thank you very, very much to the Friends and all of our very generous donors.
Thank you for that. I, I just have to underscore how very fortunate we are here. Every, I feel like every month, we itemize donations and, and, and just the generosity of, of our staff, of our community to, to enable us to provide even more for our students. So I know we're very thankful. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have one individual action item. We have the recommended approval of the memorandum of agreement with, with the Administrators and Supervisors Association of the White Plains City School District. May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Madam President. And I would like to, to thank as well our colleagues in the association as well as our colleagues who, who sat on the negotiation committee. Negotiations are necessarily challenging, but I would like to share that this entire process was once again completed in the spirit of the White Plains City School District in seeking collaboration and a sustainable successor agreement that will be good, not only for the school district into the future, but also supportive of our colleagues in the Administrators Association as well. Mr. Krunk, it was a pleasure working with you, Dr. Vicaro Tysh, as well as Will Kang and the members of the negotiations team for, for ASA. It is nice to have it almost behind us once the vote takes place. And again, thank you very much, Ann and Doug, for, for your collaboration.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we're going to move on to board committee reports. I can speak that we had a very robust finance committee meeting. Just hearing from all of the departments in terms of how they're doing, what they're doing and what the projection of their future needs are. It's just so important that we hear all this and be able to speak directly with the people who head these departments to enhance our understanding and, and knowledge base of what it takes to run a district of this size. So I, I thought that that was a really robust meeting. Thank you for entertaining the many questions and, and learning about how we, we invest our monies to make our money. Our taxpayer dollars work even harder for us. And we have to do that through sound investing and, and we have to be able to meet with people and hold them accountable for the monies that they invest for us. And, and again, thank you for that, Dr. Tysh. It's just so important that we are aware, we know and we can, we can ask questions on behalf of our community.
Curriculum, we had our presentation, thank you.
Yeah.
We, we also had our HR committee, which is confidential. Yes, yes. Yes.
So we talked about the annual risk assessment and agreed upon procedures. So part of that was acted upon tonight.
Yeah.
And so that was a good discussion. And then going back to the curriculum, if I can jump in, I didn't want to jump in before. I think this is a very informative report. I think it was honest. I think it lays out a serious work plan of what needs to be done. As we, as we work with our staff, I think it's important to remind folks rigor doesn't mean rigid in dealing with our students. And it's about keeping them excited about learning because when you're rigid, you turn them off and that's the last thing we want to do with our students. And it's hard because our staff members, they're regular people too and they put their, you know, they put everything they have into what they do. But again, our students get one shot at what they, at every year in school and it's important that we are mindful of the deliberateness that we take in our steps. So it's hard to look at this information, but again, I think it's important that we provide this information and we're deliberate in our next steps. And as we look at it, we're a district of high need and I think that's a challenge. It's not a cop-out. It's not an excuse. It's just, it's just who we are and it's how we have to move forward as a district. And it's part of what makes us the district that we are. So all of those things.
Thank you.
Special Ed also met and we discussed the self-contained continuum, looked at things like the goals of aligning the life skills continuum, strengthening positive behavioral supports, aligning instruction to standards and functional vocational and life skills, identifying areas of strength and building, you know, or training to increase capacity. We're very well-resourced in this school district. We provide a lot of professional development to our staff and we're really working hard at aligning curriculum, strengthening the support that we provide to students with ASD. We also looked at the long-range plan and implications for the department and staffing needs and how that may affect the future budget.
We had a, during that meeting, it was, it was very open and honest and frank and I really appreciate Deb Algarten and Ibelise Pilarte and Susan La Quinte for their heart that they put into this work and the thoughtfulness and the honesty when you're looking at self-contained classes and you're looking at some of the populations in these classes and how can we best serve them in district whenever possible because they're our kids. And I really, it was a really heartfelt and a wonderful meeting and I just want to thank, thank you.
And that commitment, again, to continuous improvement in how we support our students. So constantly looking at ways to strengthen what we do.
So we also had our first wellness committee meeting of this year. We're going to, we're breaking out into our subgroups. We're going to be talking about nutrition and standards for school meals and really everything related to nutrition and how we can better deliver our nutrition to all of our students. And we talk a lot about, you know, athletes that are in the school, you know, and be able to grab and eat before they go home. We know, we know how hard it is to participate on a team and then go home and have dinner and then have to do homework. So we're just looking for ways to really, you know, be deliberate and efficient with our students' time to maximize their time on task in terms of studying.
Can I add? I went to the, you put the link to the website, the wellness website for food services and it is so comprehensive, it's so transparent. You have every meeting going back to 2022. So any questions, anybody could watch it, you can read the minutes. Everything is there, our policies on meal shaming, wellness policies, it's all there.
Participation is, participation has never been better. The selection that students have, the choices that students have, the sensitivities to the unique nature of folks' diets, it is extraordinary. We're thrilled. And the quality, I mean, the quality of food is...
And again, the resources that we're putting into ensuring that we're providing high-quality food to our students and that we're providing free breakfast, free lunch, right, to everyone. And there are also after-school snacks for students that are engaged in enrichment activities and promoting that.
As well as, you know, everyone, not just, not just, yeah.
And pushing that to athletics as well.
Pushing that to everyone. And seeing that in action is really great because when we did stop by at Ridgway, you know, we saw the breakfast distribution and this is no joke. Like I spoke to, you know, the person that was in charge and you have to know all the allergies. You know the kids. It's a computer or something that was set up there so that you know right away. Like this is serious, you know, this is work to make it all, or benefit our kids. So it's great to see it in action and it's great to, you know, read and participate in a meeting, but to just first to actually get to see it in action was really a little benefit as well.
They're introducing hot breakfast too, right? That's, that's going to be really terrific.
Yeah. And we did, we updated the policy, I think, as well.
Sticks or...
Taylor Hane or Poco.
Yeah.
Pollits made to order.
We already had our finance committee update. Thank you, Jim, for the audit. And I know, Joe, you have...
Thank you. Just two quick things. Number one, the presentation that Dr. Hand, Dr. Papoulis gave this evening will be available to the Board of Education. We'll send, you know, send that to everybody if you don't already have it. And number two, from time to time on the Board's agenda, there are mid-year tenure approvals for folks who have, who were hired midway through and then received tenure midway through. Congratulations to our colleagues this evening who were on the agenda, but please also know that the celebration will continue at the end of the year when all tenure recipients are invited for the formal celebration back in, in May 2024, right around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you. And lastly, I know you noticed that Rose Lovich is not with us tonight. I just wanted to acknowledge that she is away, I believe, I think, on business, I'm not sure, but I know she wanted to be here but could not, so I extend her apologies. I do thank also, or we all thank, John Shepherd and John Misavitz, just for what you do to keep us in good... You know, what you...
Chinese Day.
You keep us in good communication and you make these meetings available, you know, for our community. And it'll include people that are working, could be more than one job, but it doesn't mean that they have to miss anything, that we provide these opportunities to participate in the educational process and be equitable in all that we do. So we thank you for that.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you to Church Street. Woo-hoo.
Yeah, Church.
Ridgway. Our administrators and our parents, our PTA council and staff. Hard to believe, next week, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
May I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.